Yeah, we're good. All right. Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the June 17th Board of Education meeting. If you could all join me with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we will start this evening with our special acknowledgements, recognition of our retiring PO and PTO heads, Mrs. Boyle.
That's a lot of assistance. Okay. Good evening. We are grateful to our parent organizations in Rye for those who step up to lead them. Tonight, we recognize and thank the PTO and PO presidents who are completing their terms after generously giving of themselves in service to our schools. These volunteers lead the parent organizations of the Rye City School District Schools. They partner with the superintendent and the school principals and connect with and organize other parents to help enhance the quality of each child's educational experience in so many ways. These, sorry, the parent organizations raise funds and provide incredibly generous gifts to the district to support cultural enrichment, enhance curriculum through events like field trips and author visits, provide opportunities throughout the year to show appreciation to our faculty and staff, technology and classroom resources, playground and athletic equipment, scholarships, awards, and much more. They regularly communicate to keep parents appraised, apprised of the many events happening within the schools. They plan and throw events that bring our school communities together to build incredible school spirit among students and parents. They collaborate with school administrators, faculty, and other staff and the Board of Education in ways that help Rye stand out as a community that values education and supports our schools and students. On behalf of the Board and the entire district, I extend a hearty thank you to the following. Please come forward when I call your name to accept a small token of our deep appreciation for all you have contributed to our school community. Caroline Scully, Rye High School. Sun Matsui, Midland School. Anna King, Milton School. And Sharon Mantel, Osborne School. And I do just want to recognize Elizabeth Little for Rye Middle School, but who could not be here tonight. Thank you all so much.
Thank you again to our PTO and PO heads. We literally would not exist without your support and all the work that you do and all of the amazing, amazing opportunities you provide for our parents and our students and our faculty. We are so grateful for all of the work that you do. So thank you again. We will now move on to the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for a June 17th Board of Education meeting. We just recognized and thanked our five retiring PO and PTO heads. I also want to add my thanks. It has been a pleasure working with you over the past year and previous years when you were not quite the head at that point and for that partnership. Just a reminder, we do have our last meeting of the school year tomorrow at 10:00. So you're not quite done yet, almost.
Just like you. Yes. Sorry.
But first, a brief sports recap. We had a lot of busy sports going on. The Boys Varsity Baseball Team traveled to States this past weekend. Unfortunately, they lost in the semifinals to Pittsburgh-Menden, which ended up winning the championship. The boys had a terrific season, so congratulations to the team and to Coach Mike Bruno. We also had two track athletes head to States this weekend. Senior Aaron Ball placed fourth in both the high jump and the long jump. Junior Ben Truman did not place, but he set a new personal record for himself in the 800 meter. Congratulations to Aaron and Ben and coaches Kevin Murphy and Blair Moynihan. This Thursday is the Juneteenth federal holiday, a reminder that schools and offices are closed in observance. And on Friday, we will hold the 94th Annual Rye High School Graduation in Nugent Stadium. This is the fourth year of holding graduation on Friday evening, which in the past has resulted in a much appreciated reduction in the on-field temperature. So far, the weather forecast is looking good, with only a 20% chance of rain at showtime and no tidal flood warnings anywhere. I did check that. I would be remiss if I didn't note the other celebrations taking place next week. Our Rye Middle School eighth graders have their moving up ceremony next Tuesday in the morning, and Milton's fifth grade moving up ceremony is that afternoon. Osborne's moving up is Wednesday late afternoon, and Midland's is Thursday late afternoon. On Friday, the 27th, we will hold the annual closing ceremony, the official start of summer for our teachers and staff. I want to preemptively wish everyone a wonderful summer full of the things they like best, be it travel, catching up with family and friends, or just lazing about in the backyard with a good book. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Great, thank you. We will now move on to presentation and discussion. One year or end of year recap, Dr. Byrne.
So as most years, we wrap up this last meeting with a brief recap of the work that we've accomplished over the previous 12 months. I'm actually going to go a little bit further back and connect some dots from a couple of years ago. So obviously, as we always begin with the Rye commitment and every decision we make, every budgetary choice we make, it is all in service of trying to achieve the tenets of the Rye commitment. So tonight's presentation, I'd like to do, I've done a lot of reflection lately, and I actually, in a very entertaining moment yesterday that I shared with Jane, I found the Hazard, Young, and Ateya leadership profile that was created in 2016 when I applied for the job. And I thought of incorporating that into this presentation, but did not have enough time. So we're going to talk a little bit about my entry plan and some things that I did coming in, and I know things that Tricia is working on right now, that anyone that knows me knows that I am deeply committed to the notion of entry, recapping a bit of the work over the past few years, and then a brief look ahead. So when I think about my entry plan, it started quite early. I was appointed to the position, and it began in the spring of 2017, prior to my start, and it did not end until the spring of 2018, which at the time was much to the chagrin of my assistant, who was really getting frustrated after December that people were still scheduling entry interviews. Initially, I held entry interviews with the trustees from the Board of Education, all of our administrators, the leadership from the PO and PTO groups, teachers, parents, support staff, municipal officials, community organization leaders, and anybody that called and was willing to sit down with me. I met with over 500 people for entry interviews, the bulk of which were actually one-on-one or two-on-one interviews, and did a number of parent coffees and community engagement events throughout that process. So out of that work with entry, and I still have my binders with all, I hand-recorded all of the notes because I never felt comfortable with a computer in front of me, and it was really interesting because all of our new administrators do entry plans now, which is something I'm particularly proud of, and Eunice Chow-Forest, our newest administrator, just very quickly, in a very efficient manner, started, ran, completed her entry process into a new position as Assistant Principal at Rye High School. There is now an app that does everything that those binders are filled with. It collects all of the information, organizes it, categorizes it, and pulls out the main important pieces from it. So for those that will be doing entry plans, talk to Eunice. So these are really interesting keys that, and I've shared this publicly multiple times, I shared this several times throughout the year. It was essential that we worked to provide vision and a sense of purpose for the school district, that we build relationships both internally and externally, that I gain a deep understanding of Rye, that I identify immediate and long-term needs, I build partnerships beyond Rye, and that was particular, that was an interesting one because one of the things that I learned was that Rye, it was like a wall was built up between the Rye Schools and the rest of the universe. We didn't have people involved in regional learning, in the tri-states consortium, and in areas where there was a lot to take from. It was to identify and address instructional needs, to codify and expand communication, evaluate facilities and space, be visible in the community, and analyze and create administrative structures and processes. This is a pretty tall list, but one of which I am very proud of where we've come. The Rye commitment was an incredible effort in a pretty short period of time with the Board, the administrative team, and folks in the community. And I put that as the very first item on this list because to me, it was the most important thing that we did, because it truly gave us that North Star, that it was clear when I arrived and through my entry process, that the community was longing for. The teachers, the families, the Board, the administrators, everyone felt that that North Star was missing. And while I'm not going to read through all of these, I think there's a few key ones that, I mean, they're all pretty important. An aligned comprehensive literacy program across all schools, and that's something that took a really long time. When I arrived, maybe some people in this room tonight talked to me about the fact that you could not tell when you walked into our classrooms whether or not you were in the same district, and that could have been the same grade level in the same building across the hall from each other, that when you went from one elementary school to the next, you had radically different instruction, you had radically different curriculum, and there was no connection vertically or horizontally in the curriculum and the instruction in any of the schools. And I'm really proud, particularly because of all of the recognition we've received from across the state, from legislators and State Education Department and the visitors. For quite some time, Tricia was like a tour guide, taking people to visit our elementary classrooms, but that comprehensive literacy program is something I'm incredibly proud of, and that work continues. And hearing the data that was discussed at the last literacy committee meeting, where our youngest learners are achieving proficiency levels that are just beyond anything you would have imagined eight years ago. An aligned mathematics program across the schools. I think you were on the math committee.
I was, yes.
The beginning of committees where parents were involved working with teachers on helping to figure out some of our most challenging problems with instruction. And again, the literacy committee, that's been going strong. I know, Tricia, you've had parents, teachers, administrators working on that. I'm incredibly proud of the inclusive instruction and the inclusive models that exist today that did not. Integrated co-teaching across all of our schools, and the work that Dr. Breedenberg and her team have done, and their work with the community to create programs and supports for all of our kids, and they have brought back so many kids whose families felt we did not offer the programs that their children needed, and they now have the faith and the trust and the confidence that we can help their kids be successful. The security evaluation that was very extensive, that was conducted, and under Gabby's leadership, the upgrades across the district. When you think of where we were with, we didn't even have locked front doors at the schools, to now where we have state-of-the-art security technology across the schools, our staff, our students are well-trained, they understand our procedures and processes, we have a coordinator of safety, security, and emergency preparedness, we have navigated some challenges in security that we've learned over the years and put in and implemented procedures and processes and facility improvements that have our kids, staff, and faculty safer than they've ever been before in the Rye City Schools. We have new schedules, kindergarten through 12th grade, the wind period at elementary school, the extended periods at both secondary, at middle school and high school. Not too long ago, at the secondary level, we had 40-minute periods for all of our courses. That's no longer the case. There's opportunities for deeper learning, opportunities for kids to become critical thinkers and creative problem solvers, and there's enough time within a period for them to collaborate, all in a goal of trying to achieve the Rye commitment. Our work with challenge success, and we've had fits and starts and stumbles in our work with challenge success, but you can see the evidence of what we've been working at over these years to try and improve the culture and climate of our schools. And I know that under the leadership of Dr. Murray and Dr. Breedenberg, with the new Director of School Counseling and Student Wellness, that we will go to the next level in supporting students' mental health and wellness and creating a wonderful culture and climate in our schools, building upon the good work. Implementing Parent University, and while we don't offer as many of those Parent University events anymore, we offer them at strategic points with multiple options of learning so that they appeal to parents and they can help understand what we're doing. But beyond that, getting all of our curriculum maps online so that parents understand what's happening in school. Bringing parents into the fold was a really important piece that I heard, helping parents know what's happening in school and giving them access to the schools. It has been a wonderful gift to our program. The Facilities Master Plan and the Capital Project, the amount of work that has been done in these schools, again, under Gabby and Rob, to improve where we are and our facilities. I joke about it all the time, the elimination of the Midland smell, air conditioning and fresh air ventilation across all of the schools, better lighting, better windows, safer windows, something I'm really proud of, and the work that our custodians and our facilities team, and I didn't even talk about the fact that we actually have a facilities team now that we did not have. And the Board has been so supportive. Without your support and the Boards that preceded you, to be able to make all of these things happen, because we would come with these ideas and you would say, "It makes sense, make it happen." So we started with one mechanic, one facilities person in Patrick, and now we have three, and the amount of work that they are able to do, and it saves the district money and it puts our facilities in a better place. And I was talking to the guys today over here at the middle school, and they're just like a machine, the two of them, and Patrick, while he's doing his work, they're just off, they have their little vehicles, they show up, they fix things, they improve things, and it's someplace where we were never going to be. It's not long ago that our facilities were run by an outside provider. That was a big step. Aramark, they should be doing food, not facilities. School counselors at all of our schools. I know some folks at the table had been talking about that for years, but the fact that we have school counselors who have deep relationships with their kids from kindergarten straight through 12th grade, we have a counseling plan, and we now have, starting July 1, a Director of School Counseling and Student Wellness. Our skills-based educational support classes, so our kids are not just going to ESC and getting help with completing their assignments. Our special educators and teachers are working to develop the skills they need so that they can be successful in their work. And thanks to Aaron and Amy and Linda and the special education team, that's been incredibly supportive for our kids. Our content-based special education teachers. We made a conscious decision a number of years ago to focus on when we are hiring special education teachers at the secondary level, that we want mathematics-certified special education teachers. Brian, you've been incredibly helpful in that, in working with Aaron and going out, hitting the colleges and the universities and recruiting people to make that something that's possible. The Haskins Lab work, and Tricia, what you've accomplished with phonics and the science of reading across the schools is incredibly powerful and something I'll be always looking out and learning from in the work that you're doing. The engineering program. Not long ago, we had a few random engineering courses at the high school. We had a few random engineering courses that some kids took as electives at the middle school. We now have a wealth of engineering courses that all kids can take, six through eight, and that kids who choose to really follow up on engineering, they have a lot of options in engineering and robotics and coding at the high school level. The technology advancements, and I think of the work that Caitlin has done, and I think of one of my very early Board of Education meetings. We were right here in this room, and if you recall, in the old days, we had a cart, like a rusty cart, that would be put right in the middle here, and we had to be connected to that, and the cart was not working in the middle of a presentation. And Gabby jumped up, and she's trying to make the cart work so that we can continue the meeting, because we didn't have that little panel that controlled it all. We didn't have the camera in the ceiling that controlled it all. And Gabby was struggling, and I got up and helped, and we finally got the meeting back on track. But when we think about, our kids did not have devices, we were just starting smartboards in the classrooms. We've come a long way in technology. There's still a long way to go because the technology advancements are much faster than we are, but the fact that we've continued where in our second five-year plan after the very first five-year plan, and we're continuing to make those improvements. The transition from the Rye School of Leadership to the Academy at Rye High School, from a program that in its last year was supporting one student from the Rye City School District, to a program that now supports about 40 students from the Rye City Schools. Joe DiGiovanni stepping up and doing a pilot of the Universal Screener, the NWA, during the very beginning of COVID, no less, and that has actually enabled us and been the building block for so much of the literacy work across K-8. The mental health supports that exist across all the schools, from the SEL Committee to the DBT work, to the WJCS partnership, have been incredibly powerful and helpful for our community. The review of the high school and middle school athletics offerings and club offerings, the addition of new sports and clubs that appeal to more kids across a range of areas, and that we are not just an athletics place anymore. We have places for our kids in the arts if they want to be in clubs, for our kids that wish to take newer courses and newer opportunities in music and theater and coding and robotics. We can't get enough spots in robotics clubs for our kids. The establishment of a capital reserve fund, which the Board committed to back in 2019 to be better prepared in the future for those capital needs as they come. And the incredible offerings of meaningful, quality, professional development, not just for our teachers, but for all of our staff, the training that our custodians get now, the training that our clerical staff, and we did it all with strong fiscal stewardship and in a sustainable model, so it continues going forward. So there are so many people that have made this possible, and it's, I'm just so incredibly proud, and I had a chance to spend some time with the clerical staff and the custodians this afternoon, and, you know, when I looked at all of those faces and their commitment to our schools and their commitment to our children, and I think about our administrators and our leaders who have done so much of this work, because it's not just us up at the table, there's so many more people behind the scenes that make it possible for all of it to happen. And it's just something to think about as we move forward and something that I'm particularly proud of, and I know will continue, because I've said this many times before. You know, there are people like me in this business that we love, like ripping things up, we love identifying problems, we love building foundations, and we love figuring out where you need to go. And then there are people like your next superintendent who could take you to levels that I think are going to be extraordinary in this community. And I'm so proud of the Board for sticking to that North Star and making the decision to take Rye to the next level. And I thank you for that opportunity to be here these past eight years, and as we look ahead, I'm thinking, and I know that Dr. Murray will have a lot more to say about these going forward, but just a short list of the things that are coming. The implementation of IB. The implementation of IB is such an exciting thing for this community and for our kids. Continuing to strengthen communication and community engagement. I know that Tricia is committed to empowering our students and giving them a stronger voice, and she's already done that, but I can't wait to see what happens next. Elevating the professional growth and particularly teacher leadership. Continuing to elevate instruction and opportunities for all of our students. And addressing and incorporating AI. The list is a lot longer, but these are big things that, as I was reflecting on where we've been these last eight years, I know that those are really important areas that you'll be tackling moving forward. But again, I want to thank the Board and the Boards before you for the opportunity to be here. I want to thank my teammates at the table for the opportunity to work with them. You know, one of the things that people said is, "We'd like you to stay for a while," when I got here, and I think we did. Eight years, we got a lot of good work done. There's a lot of amazing people in this school district, in this community, and Rye is a different place in a wonderful way, and I'm so excited for where you're going to go next. But thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you. I'm part wondering if you shared that list with us so you could let us know how tired you are, and that really you are ready to take a semi-retirement. So the Board is going to reserve their comments for a little later, but it is truly amazing to take that step back and to see all that has been laid and to know that all that will come is the result of a very strong foundation. So I will leave it at that for right now.
I would just say, on your last point, you know, smart move in terms of getting out before we're tempted to replace you with AI. That's a good call.
Maybe we have.
And it might be the Board members getting replaced first, but we'll see.
All right. Because this is your last Board meeting, I do not want to just kind of run through things, so we're going to do it as we normally would. And so for the hearing of the public on non-agenda items, we welcome and encourage our community members to address the Board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The Board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future Board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the Board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. Seeing no members of the community here for the hearing of the public, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? Valerie Lapham, seconded by Matt Shibenoff. Let's take a look at tonight's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. And consent agenda curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Seeing no questions, can I have a vote to approve this evening's consent agenda? All those in favor? That is 6 to 0 with one absent. So on this evening's consent agenda, we have approved as the Board of Education the Code of Conduct. This is an important document for all school community members to review prior to the start of the 2526 school year. It is part of our student registration plan and process, so please don't just do the old quick click-through. Some of us, when registering, re-registering our students, may have done that in the past, but not this year because we've got a new document that we want everybody to make sure they take a look at. We have contract approvals related to the additions at Midland and Osborne, related to the capital bond work. We look forward to an exciting summer of lots of diggers and work and exciting things that will happen for us in September. We have the approval of the contract with DeRosa Sports Construction for the updating and maintaining of our sports fields. This is the commitment of the administration and the Board of Education to keep facilities and our fields in good, regular working order. We have an approval of a gift from the Rye Middle School PO in the amount of 119,490... What, did I stutter?
109.
No, 109?
That's what mine says.
Well, that's my eyesight. That's why I need new glasses.
913.
Okay. Yep, yep, yep. 1,956... Where'd I even get that number from? I don't even have the right number. 1,956.88 to support the purchase of furniture for five classrooms. We also are approving a gift from Jim Hema... Did I say that right? X-E-Hema?
Yes.
Hema, Jim Hema, in the amount of $25,000 for the maintenance of the track and to support the Spring for Rye initiative. We also have a number of hires and approvals for summer curriculum work. And we also have two approvals this evening that I would like to pull out and recognize that we have Dr. Cody Bloom, who will be joining us as our new high school principal. Dr. Bloom, we are very... Assistant principal!
Did you see his face?
Okay. Wait, what was I signing up for? I'm going to do that again, Dr. Bloom. Dr. Bloom will be joining us now as the high school assistant principal. He will be coming up through the ranks as we have had a great opportunity to have a few times this year, and we're very excited about that. And moving from social studies, where I will tell you personally, from student experience, he's a very effective teacher, and so now we are sure he will be a very effective assistant principal. So congratulations, Dr. Bloom. And we also have Mr. A.J. Thompson here this evening, who is now going to be joining us as a fully certified special education and English language arts teacher at the high school. We are very excited to have you here, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson comes up also through the ranks, as he is here now having been a Rye High School graduate. And again, a little personal, he is also one of our football coaches, so we are very excited to have you, A.J., joining the family, so congratulations. We also have approval of agreements with various curriculum and instructional leaders, which will continue to provide our teacher with high-quality, relevant professional learning. So that was a packed agenda that I messed up twice. So, you know, I told you we're going to give you the full flavor on your last time here. All right. So there is no presentation discussion number two, but now we move on to information and discussion. Mrs. Boyle, policy.
Thank you. So during our last meeting, our last policy meeting, as well as our last Board meeting, we did talk about this brand-new policy, which is called Students and Personal Electronic Devices, also known as the cellphone bell ban. The law around this was finalized just a few weeks ago, and so this is the policy that the Rye City School District has created around that law. And one of the things I think that's important to note about the intention of this is that the overarching purpose is to provide students with fewer distractions, less opportunity for negative impact on their mental health and their well-being. So if we think about it from that context, it's a really important part of what we're trying to do by having these devices not used throughout the school day. There are some exceptions within the policy, as you'll see. Those are limited to students who have an IEP or a 504, where having access to the device throughout the day is part of that plan. There's also an exception for students who need it for healthcare management, such as diabetes or asthma or medications. Translation services is another exception. And then there is an exception for case-by-case basis for students that are primary caregivers. Those all will need to, will be given information to parents for anything that they would need to provide as far as documentation around those exceptions as part of the communications that will be sent out. Essentially, the devices, really, in many ways, not much has changed in terms of what we have been doing before at the elementary level, which we had lots of discussion, actually, toward the end of last year about. Parents were very concerned about students having access and using smartphones at young ages, but the process or the practice has always been that students should not be bringing at the K-5 level any devices to school. Students that do bring devices to school, those will be, and use them, will be taken, and parents will have to pick those up. At the middle school level, which has been the practice this year as well, students need to have their devices silenced and stored in lockers. And again, as, if there's a student that is using it throughout the day, those devices will be taken, and parents will have to come and pick those devices up. At the high school level, there is the, I guess, the most significant change. The students will need to store devices in lockers. All students will be provided with a locker. Those should be silenced. And again, if a student is using them throughout the day, they will be taken, and there's a, throughout the, in the policy, there's a process for a first time when that happens, the student can collect it at the end of the day, and after that, then a parent will need to come and pick up the device. The other elements that are important to know are that the, any student who's using the devices provided by the school, so Chromebooks, or in some levels at the elementary level, there's iPads, I believe, those are not part of this policy because they're used for educational purposes. Similarly, in the high school, for our BYOD program, those devices will also be allowed because they are being used for educational purposes. There will be lots of communication to parents and students and families about this. And in fact, as part of the development of the policy, there's been many discussions with faculty, administrators, parents, and students about the process around this and what the law looked like. There will also be communication around how students will be able to, or how parents will be able to get in touch with their students if that is necessary throughout the school day. Those will come from the building-level administrators prior to the start of school. So I think that's the overview. Does anyone have any questions? Comments? Nope? Matt?
I guess just one question. I just think about these sort of loopholes, or maybe unintended, but smart watches and, you know, linking to, you know, a device that might be right outside the door?
So smart watches are part of the defined group of internet-enabled devices. So again, would have to be stored in a locker throughout the day, silenced or probably better off if they're not on at all, but that is what the process will be.
I guess another one, just around, you know, sort of think of it as, you know, a car alarm that just continuously goes off. I mean, is, do we have anything around, you know, ensuring that there's a silence and perhaps ramifications if, you know, there's a phone that's ringing or getting constantly pinged and causing a distraction outside? Maybe the doors in the schools are...
I'm not sure that that needs to be in the policy, but anything like that would be addressed by the administrators with the families.
The building level.
And certainly, the schools are aware of whose lockers are who, so they can certainly, the administration can access lockers and then help secure those, silence those devices as needed if that should become a problem. But again, that's all kind of in the sausage-making at the building, so, for smarter minds than ours. I will say it was a hefty lift to get it done in a short amount of time because we were working under a very tight guideline from the state, so I really do appreciate the work of the Policy Committee on making sure that this got pulled together in time, not only for us to be in compliance with the August 1 deadline of the state, but also to allow us as a district to be able to communicate these changes to families so that September 1, none of this is a surprise. And so our students can get acclimated to a new way of behaving, our parents can get acclimated in a new way of behaving. Lots of changes, but change is not always a bad thing. So we look forward to seeing what happens in September.
Yes.
Okay. And so, Ms. Boyle, what will be the process for this policy at this point?
So we will move it forward to our next Board meeting, which will happen in July for a second review, and then post that meeting, we will approve it at the very next meeting.
Okay. Great.
Or adopt it.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So now we've reached communications to and from the Board. So we have Board officers, Board members will state their intentions regarding Board Officer positions. Anybody? Anybody have any ideas, suggestions? Oh, Valerie Lapham.
I would like to nominate Jane Anderson for Board President, as well as Jennifer Boyle for Vice President for the following year.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lapham. That's very kind of you. Ms. Boyle, do you want to go first?
Sure. Well, thank you. I appreciate the nomination and would certainly be honored to continue to do as much work as I can to help bring us forward and work as a team together around and with our new leader in place as of July 1, to continue to do all the great work for the school district that we've been doing. So, thank you. I will accept your nomination.
Thank you. You've done an amazing job this year, so appreciate it.
I also humbly appreciate and thank you for your nomination. I am honored, and I use that word in the most genuine sense that it can be meant, for you to make that recommendation and that nomination. I think the work, when you have an opportunity to look back, you know, eight years, to see the work that the Board has been able to do in supporting the superintendent to truly transform a school district, it is amazing, and it is very humbling, the work that we do. And the idea that you all would like to put up with my antics and my, you know, stumblings and blunderings around in meetings, I truly am honored, and I would be more than happy to accept the nomination. And I look forward to all the great work with you all and with Ms. Boyle, and certainly with Dr. Murray and the team next year. So we'll see what happens at our July reorg meeting, when everybody gets to vote, and we'll see if we make it, Jen. Finger crossed.
Thank you. You've both been wonderful as far as being on board for this first year. You've really led this group and showed us, you know, what it's all about and have taught me so much over the first year, and I really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. That means a lot. Okay, we will now move on to Board and Committee updates, and it looks like policy. Ms. Boyle, what else did you guys work on?
We actually didn't do much else because we now won't meet as a committee again until September, so we felt finishing out the year with a brand-new, another brand-new policy, we've had several this year, was probably a good way to pause, and then we can pick up whatever might be coming our way in September.
All right. I think that sounds fair enough. Now, it's not on the agenda, but I will take the liberty of adding an item to the agenda, and that would be an opportunity for the Board to recognize Dr. Byrne one more time. So I would turn to the Board at this time for any comments or remarks that any of my Board members would like to share. Matt, you look poised and ready to go, so I'm going to start with you.
If that is me looking poised, then maybe I should just... No, but Dr. Byrne, it's been a wonderful year working with you. And again, you know, as a first year of service on this, on this great group, I guess I have the benefit of seeing, you know, those seven years already, you know, with so much transition taking place. And, you know, I've only been in the community for three years, so, you know, when I moved to the community, it was, oh, this is just the way it's done, and it must have been, that's the way it's always been done. But, you know, spending time here, you realize, oh, this is not the way it always was. And I think, you know, just the guiding North Star of the Rye commitment certainly, you know, just speaks to how you've, you and your team have tried to ensure that all stakeholders are, you know, brought along and in a budget-compliant way. That is no easy task, seeing how many moving parts are required to make a difference. No, it's been, it's wonderful. You will absolutely be missed. I am excited to see where, you know, your path will progress, but also know that you'll always have a home here, and I know that Dr. Murray will hopefully have you on speed dial for, you know, any questions at any time. But, you know, very sad to see you go, but greatly appreciate all that you've done for
I just have a quick few things. I just wanted to thank you for everything you've done for the district over these past eight years, from the big things to the little things. You've paid a lot of attention to what goes on in the Rye City School District and have just left things so much better off from where they were when you came. I'll never forget, one of the first times I was introduced to you was at a meeting for the passing of the bond, and at the time, I was the Osborne Messenger News Editor, which I did that for quite a few years for some reason, still doing it for some reason at other schools. But I think we had published an issue that day, and when you found out who I was, you actually said back or repeated something back that had been in that day's issue. And I was like, it was like a tiny little thing, and I can't remember what it was, but I was just blown away that you had actually, like, read the issue. It had just come out. It was very unexpected, and so it's very clear that from every little detail, you are monitoring what's happening in the school district. And the list you just went over earlier in your presentation is tremendous, and it's just amazing that we've been so lucky to have you here. You will be missed, but so excited for whatever the future may bring you. So thank you and good luck in the future.
Yeah, I would, you know, I want to echo what Matt said, even though I go back a few years more than him, just the impression of things are under control, this is how it's always been done, you know, and sort of took some time on the Board to realize sort of how quickly you had implemented that. So even though, you know, in my period, we had some of our challenging times, you know, sort of the period around the bond and then COVID and the Diversity Task Force and all of those types of things, but those were like bumps that came up. But those were like bumps that came up that were dealt with amazingly, but the underlying, like, core plan of how are we going to reorganize and move forward, the list of things that you've shown, I mean, I think was there so early on, and then just a steady execution on that while still managing to get those things done with, you know, global pandemics and other distractions. So, really, really commend you. You'll be missed. Can dive right back into the field whenever you want to. But, yeah, so don't be a stranger. We hope you show up to, you know, for a community speech sometime to keep Jane on her toes and welcome whenever you're in Rye.
I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership over the past few years. It's been a pleasure knowing you and working with you, starting, now it's been three years that I have been able to, had the pleasure to work closely with you through the POs and my first year on the board. And, you know, your presence is second to none, and the recognition that you give every staff member in every building is so wonderful. And I think it makes a difference in the way that, you know, our teachers feel, our students feel. It makes us feel like a community, and everything that you have helped put in place has moved us forward. And when you moved to Rye, and people say, "I moved to Rye because of the schools," so much of that is from what you have done to make the schools this way. So, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna read mine, because otherwise I'll go all over the place, and nobody wants that right now. So, I've had the good fortune to work closely with Eric over the past eight years. I was a member of the board that hired him, and shortly thereafter, a new and somewhat green board officer that he had the opportunity to partner with and to support his work. His teaching skills came in handy as we both learned on the job at times. From the start, Eric took the helm with confidence, curiosity, focus, and an unwavering commitment to our students and moving the district forward. Eric's tenure as superintendent has been active, rewarding, and challenged with some unexpected events. His first priority was to listen to the school community, to get to know faculty, staff, parents, and students. He used that input to build a vision to anchor our work. Ideas became goals, goals became plans, and those plans became the foundation of the district we know today. In his first few years, Eric led the district through one of the largest capital bond projects ever proposed in Rye. He introduced integrated co-teaching into our elementary schools. He championed the reimagination of our alternative high school program that resulted in the academy. And he guided the district through the creation of a mission and vision statement, the Rye Commitment, that continues to steer program development and strategic decision-making at all levels. All of this and more, as we heard a little while ago, was done with a laser focus on students so that each child in Rye has the opportunity to grow, thrive, and pursue their interests. And just in case that wasn't enough to manage, there was the small matter of navigating a global pandemic, creating hybrid instruction, and a flood that delayed the opening of school. Eric met each of these challenges with calm leadership and steady resolve. Eric, thank you for your leadership, your dedication, and your unwavering belief in what our schools and students can become. Congratulations on your retirement, sort of, sort of retirement. And your tenure has made a lasting impact on our community.
So, tonight marks another stop in what I have lovingly referred to as the Eric Byrne farewell tour. Way back in October, Eric informed the board and the community that after eight years in the Rye City Schools, that he would be retiring at the end of the year. It is hard to believe that the end is near, and in some ways, it is even harder to believe that you are only semi-retiring. In the eight years that you have been here, Eric, you have transformed the Rye City School District from a place of five separate schools to a district with one common vision, the Rye Commitment. The creation of the Rye Commitment, many would say, is the legacy you will leave behind. But it isn't just the words of the commitment that will remain here after you leave, but you will leave programs and initiatives that have forever changed the work of the schools. Reading, writing, math, engineering, art, music, student supports, data, literally every aspect of the schools have been transformed for the better since your arrival. It was not always easy. There was Cupcake Gate, 11 votes for the bond, COVID flooding. And it certainly wasn't always as fast as some, yes, me, and those darn baby steps would have liked. But, as it is said, it isn't how you start, but rather how you finish that matters. And you are finishing strong. Eric, during your time in Rye, you have been committed to students, always keeping them in the forefront of your mind. You have been committed to teachers, always providing them with the supports and professional learning needed so they could best support our students. You have been committed to the Rye community, engaging and informing everyone about the work of the district while seeking the community's support to ensure the best possible outcomes for students. Your commitment, just like the Rye Commitment, is a legacy that will stand the test of time in Rye. When you first announced your retirement, people would ask you what you planned to do with your free time, and you would always mention paddleboarding. Now, even though you aren't really retiring, the board got you a gift for you to use when you actually do retire and finally get to enjoy the open waters. You can open it at your leisure. You don't have to right now. So, as you get ready to paddleboard, I will leave you with an Irish blessing fit for a paddleboarder. May the road rise up to meet you. May the wind always be at your back. May the warm rays of sun fall upon your home, and may the land of a friend always be near. There's something in the bag. There's a sign. Take it out, please. And may the land... Yeah, there was a prompt. Bad, bad decision on my part. The big one. Big. You can't miss it. Yeah, what does it say?
Rye friends are forever friends.
That's right. And please remember, Eric, once a garnet, always a garnet. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
We thank you. And there will be, there are more stops on our tour, so, because June 30th is his last official day. So, with that being said, this is our last official Board of Education meeting for the 24-25 school year. Not sure how that happened, but we will be joining and meeting again on July 10th for our reorganization meeting, where we will have Dr. Tricia Murray as our superintendent of schools. So, we all look very forward to that. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Sean Klopp for seconded by Matt Shibinoff. All those in favor? 6-0, one absence. Good night.